Township Council is called to order. Madam Clerk.
In accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act of the state of New Jersey, adequate notice of this work session regular meeting of the Franklin Township Council was made as required, indicating that this work session regular meeting would take place at the municipal building at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, November 12, 2024.
Thank you. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by invocation by Councilman Embarrasson.
The flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, eternal, just as it's from.
May those assembled here today enjoy the many offerings of our township. May we abide by the rules we have established, those of trust, fellowship, and ethics, and may we place service above self in our daily endeavors. And may we always test ourselves and our efforts to be sure they are the truth, good, for all concerned, of benefit to mankind, and provide peace and understanding. Amen.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilman Embarrasson.
Here.
Councilwoman Francois. Councilman Karazi.
Here.
Mayor Kramer.
Here.
Councilman Odiyaka. Deputy Mayor Petosnick.
Present.
Councilwoman Nudine. Councilwoman Vasanella.
Here.
Councilman Wright.
We have no commendations and proclamations. Do I have a motion to open to the public?
Second.
Moved in second at all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. We are open to the public. Anyone wishing to speak, five-minute limit, may only come up once, no yielding of time. Please state your name and address.
I forget to turn it on right before. Okay, hi. Debbie Stewart to Farrington. Nothing super important except, do you send, and maybe it didn't come to me, a text message about the property taxes or an email? Well, you know what? You're not being consistent because last quarter or another quarter, I was getting text messages and I was like, this is awesome. Now I don't have to try to figure out a way to remember on my own. And now I realize today I'm late.
Can I take your time for a second? I'll tell you.
I'm finished. That's why I have to.
You need to be signed up. You need to be signed up.
Mr. Vornlocker.
Okay. Oh, at the end, at the end.
Just making it easy.
Thank you. I thought I was signed up. Sometimes I get things, sometimes I don't get things. I didn't get the agenda for today, so I don't know. It could be me, but I don't know what's going on. Thank you. That was it. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Benjamin Guy, 35 Pettin Drive. Just wanted to make two awareness portions of things that were going on in the area. One is, there is on December 21st, I just want to say this early, December 24th is going to be classified as National Homeless Persons Memorial Day. So specifically in New Brunswick and Franklin Township, there'll be collecting stuff for homeless people. I'll make this announcement again probably in December, but I just want to put this on the agenda because Somerset Community Action Program and also some other organizations will be collecting goods for homeless people. We kind of classify that we don't have homelessness in this area. We do. I just want to make sure we're clear about that. During this period of timeframe, we do see an epidemic of people doing that, and because of inflation, we do have problems with people couch surfing and other things else. It's not just about what we see on the street, it's also about people not having the right source of goods and everything else to do that. So we're going to be collecting information about that going forward at all. The other thing is, I just want to know, because this is something that's going to come up over the next four or five years. We talk about infrastructure projects that are probably going to come up, whether or not it's roadways or any other improvements. And really, I think this is for Mr. Vornlocker than it is for anybody else. Is there a posting of when we have specific sites and roadways that we're going to be closing during the period of timeframe over the next three to five years? And I know that between the planning board and also other people, it's just, we want to know what's going on and what's approved and what's not approved during that period of timeframe. That's one thing. And then the second portion, I asked this question last time because we're going to go into budget season soon, is that for both the Hamilton Street Board and other people, because we're trying to make budget submissions as we go along, because we're having a meeting in December about this, is that we want to know what the plan was, or is there any conversation with the Township Council about the streetscape plan that's actually going to be out there and what they're submitting for and what they're not submitting for? Whether or not it's going to be through the planning board, if it's through any other planning subcommittees at all, what they're actually proposing for streetscape in the Hamilton Street area so that we know, so we can tell the business owners and we can actually submit a budget correctly for what we're going to try to tax the business for people on. And then I also want to put this out there to the board altogether, because we formed the Hamilton Street Board probably about maybe 10, 15 years ago, reformed the board because it became defunct, I think in 2014, and the town council came about revitalizing this. Because we do do a CIT tax, and I would ask the lawyer about this, for the assessments about what the CIT tax is actually supposed to be utilized for going forward in the future, going forward in the future, is it CIT tax relevant as it goes along? Now, that's a question not to be answered now, but it's something to evaluate altogether because usually in a CIT tax, you're using it around a Main Street area that you're doing. I don't think we really classify yet on record that we classify Hamilton as the Main Street District. We say it is, but we don't really incentivize it to be done. So I'm asking, when we're doing this evaluation, because it comes up around a 10-year period, is that something that we want to go forward in the next 10, 15, 20 years as we go along? Because there is development to happen around there, but are we incentivizing enough business to come in that area through what we're doing for the incentive package, whether or not it's special improvement district tax or anything else? Are we going to be assessing that and looking at what we're going to be doing going forward in the future so that we can incur either more development, less development, or incentivize those people to actually keep businesses in the area? Because if we're going to classify that area, we want to have that conversation as we go along. So those are some things that should think about, but I just want to bring those up during this period of timeframe so we can have open conversations and dialogue. And because two of the council people are not here, I'm not going to ask the other question because they're not here at this timeframe. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good evening. I'm Reich Soudam. I live at 1803 Route 27 here in Somerset, and I farm on Skilman Lane, both sides of Skilman Lane for about a mile on each side. And that's part of the reason I'm here, is did a great job paving Skilman Lane. Whoever was in charge of that, good job. Thank you. The traffic on Skilman Lane, even though we can't affect the volume of traffic, we can affect the speed and the type of traffic. Now, we've been, the residents of Skilman Lane have been working with the police, we've been doing very well, pretty good on speeding. We've got presence, we're knocking them down, not getting them all, but it's, we're working with police on that. The overweight trucks, however, are just flowing through nonstop. We've got tractor-trailer, oh, by the way, Skilman Lane is rated for four tons. That's 8,000 pounds. That's a pickup truck. Anything bigger than a pickup truck is overweight, therefore in violation. That beautiful road we just finished that we taxpayers paid for, those heavy trucks are going to break it down quicker than its life should be. So I'm here to ask for some help. Police are helping us already on the speeding. Can we emphasize a little bit on the overweight trucks? Because they're going to tear up the road. Honestly, Skilman Lane's not very wide. You get a tractor-trailer coming one way and a box truck coming the other, we've got a problem. So I'm asking for some help there. And also on Skilman Lane, we're everybody's favorite dumping area. Maybe not favorite, but we're in the top five. And we get plywood and televisions and tires. And I try to get them so it could be seen by township employees that are going by. Sometimes it doesn't happen, so I call DPW. Hey, guys, can you help clean up the mess that somebody left on Skilman Lane? Well, no, you got to call the police. Why do I call the police? Because it's unlawful dumping. But they're going to call you. Yeah, we know. Come on. Can we speed up the process a little bit? You know, if DPW goes to clean up and they find something that needs to be investigated, then we call the police? It just seems a little backwards, if you know what I mean. And last thing is, I still call a consul out of fathers. What do we call the township property on the Court of U. and 27? Where the Board of Ed is?
The Board of Ed.
We call it the Board of Ed? All right. Sorry, I lived with it as consul out of fathers for 60 years, so.
And we know what you mean when you say it.
Okay. We got to mow it. The noxious weed population on that property is all of it. And there are statutes in this state, you can be fined for allowing noxious weeds, specifically Canada thistle, which we have plenty of in Franklin Township. It's all over Six Mile Run, it's all over the Poty grasslands. What I'm asking is that property, Board of Ed property, be put on a calendar for maintenance of mowing, at least four times a year. Knock that stuff down, keeps the weed seed on the property so it's not blowing into the neighbors. Again, North Brunswick gets a bunch of it too, but it also ends up in my hayfields, and then I have to use more techniques, chemicals, to eliminate those weeds. So I'm asking for your help. Help me on Skilman Lane with some of our problems. And can we put a schedule to mow the property at the Board of Education? I'll take any questions from you.
So we've developed a process where we answer your questions after all of the questions or after public session, then we have an answer session.
Okay. I'll wait. Thank you.
Eleanor Hogan, 9 Republic Road, Somerset. I just want to agree with what Debbie Stewart said about the notification of the property tax. And the reason I remember it is because I had discussion with my brother, because we would try to remind each other, and I was saying to him, oh, our town notifies us. And this time, for some reason, the town didn't notify me. And I remember calling my brother and saying, oh, I was almost late with my property taxes, and you didn't call me either. So I just want to say that. Okay?
Thank you. Anyone else?
Jan Brant, 22, Bryant Court. Just a couple of questions I have. Wanted to find out, and I know I asked this last time, what the status is of the traffic report that's being done for Franklin Township. I know that there's supposed to be a special meeting where the public's invited, and I haven't heard anything about that yet, so just checking in about that. My second question is, when an ordinance is passed on the second reading, how long does it take for it to go into effect? And you know, I know it's a certain amount of days, maybe perhaps 10, I guess you guys will tell me, and I'm wondering if that's business days or just a certain amount of days. And then the other thing I wanted to ask was, I noticed on the property at approximately, I think it's 100 Schoolhouse Road, there's just like a truck, like a pickup truck with a for sale sign, and I don't believe it belongs to the owners of, you know, that's where the B9 Link Logistics property is, and so there's just like a pickup truck, like, you know, kind of like a new car lot, you know, they're advertising to sell a pickup truck there. So I'm just wondering if I should report that or if that's just, you know, something that you all don't take care of. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I see no one else coming up. See no one come forward. Mayor motion to close the public portion.
Second.
Moved in second at all in favor of closing public portion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Public portion is closed. Answering questions to the public. Notice of taxes, four-ton limit, Skilman dumping, those are all for you, Mr. Vornlocker. The BOE field, I'll start with, you might want to finish it up. That used to be farmed, and at the request of a neighbor who was very sensitive to pesticides, we said no pesticides there. And I'd be really eager to have a farmer farm that so that we wouldn't have to cut the fields, but I would be interested in organic farming. And we might even, this is me thinking off the top of my head, always dangerous, but maybe we could do that at a discount.
I think that if Mr. Soudam happened to know anyone on the Open Space Advisory Committee, perhaps he would have a conversation with anyone that he knows on the Open Space Advisory Committee. Because that property that you're talking about falls under the guidance of the Open Space Advisory Committee. I think you know a couple of people there, so do I. I think one's related to you. And so, but yeah, the issue was, there was more than one issue, as the mayor said, related to that particular piece of property, in particular, the property to the south of the buildings, between the buildings and Court Lou. That property in particular was one that was, that became an issue at several Open Space Advisory Committee meetings and one of the neighbors. So, but we can certainly have a discussion. There's an Open Space Advisory Committee meeting a week from today. Well, I understand that you want us to mow it, and I can appreciate that. Well, that's fine, but the mowing of open space properties has always been one that was done at the direction and under the kind of supervision of representatives of the Open Space Advisory Committee. And they have a committee, a subcommittee of that to determine what gets mowed and what doesn't get mowed. So what I'm saying to you is, that's always been, as long as I've been the township manager since 2012, a discussion that was had amongst the members of the Open Space Advisory Committee. Well, unfortunately, starting at the top is not always the way to get things done the right way. We have committees that deal with these particular issues. So that's one. As far as the dumping on Skilman's Lane, I'll certainly, I can have a discussion with the Public Works Office staff, but the truth is that it has always been the procedure here that those things get reported to the police department as illegal dumping. Before things, it's a thing that gets done consecutively, right? So there's, the call gets made, the police department goes, and then they call the Public Works Department to go pick it up. A lot of times, that doesn't necessarily need to get done, but we also like to try to catch people who are dumping on the property. Most of it being, in all honesty, not dumped on township property, but being dumped on state property. So that then brings in a whole nother aspect to it, because we're utilizing our resources to take dumping off of state land, which is, you know, we do it, but then we incur the cost as opposed to the state, and it might all seem to be taxpayer money, but we don't have endless resources as far as funds to get rid of the things that we pick up. We have to pay for that. All right? As far as the trucks, you were down the road already with the police department and speeding. It's the police department that enforces the weight restrictions. So they should be doing both of those things simultaneously. If they're doing a job on the speeders and they have a presence for the speeders, they should be doing enforcement for the weight restrictions on the road at the same time. And I'll speak with the Public Safety Director about it, but I don't know how you could do one without the other. If you're there and you run a radar and a truck goes by, you don't say, well, I'm not going to go pull the truck over because I'm here running radar today. That doesn't seem to make much sense. So I'll take care of that one.
Notice of taxes?
Notice of taxes. The only thing I can tell you is that notices go out as a result of you signing up on the township website for notifications. There's a whole laundry list of notification choices that you can make, and whenever there's an update made to the township website, that generates those notices to come out. I mean, I get, I don't know, about a dozen of them a day because I'm signed up for everything to make sure that they're going out. And I can't tell you, in all honesty, I've been out of work for three weeks having surgery. So I haven't been paying much attention to whether notifications went out about taxes. But I certainly, if you just, I would double check when you get home to just go on the township website and see, if nothing else, refresh it and see if you start to get email notifications. I don't know what ones you've signed up for, so I don't know what ones you get.
No, 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 I can't. Sorry, I can't.
So the answer to your question not asked is?
And I tried to stop him too.
The generating of emails and text messages is as a result of you signing up for notifications. We obviously post on our website that tax bills are due. Tax bills are out and tax payments are due. So that notification would go as a result of the update to the township website. That's how it works. When something changes or something is added, you know, the banner on the homepage that says tax payments are due by February 10th, right? You know, greatest period of 10 days. When it says that, that banner that gets put up there generates, for those people who have signed up appropriately, an email saying your tax bills are out, or your tax payments are due. Tax bills only come out once a year.
Traffic report.
The traffic report, so I spoke with Mr. Dominack today, and my understanding is that the meeting, the public meeting won't be scheduled until at least the fourth, well, probably the first week of December at this point, given the holidays and the fact that all of, well, at least a majority of the people up here will be away next week for a good portion of the week for the New Jersey League of Municipalities Convention. I'll be here.
Mr. Renone, what's the delay after ordinance is passed?
Ordinance take effect 20 days following adoption and publication. That's calendar days.
Calendar days. And pickup trucks for sale?
It's a different one.
Mr. Vornlocker.
I'm sorry.
Pickup truck for sale with a sign on it?
Well, I can only say that we can certainly check to see if there's something about it, but the property owner is the one who would have to make that complaint. Anyone can put a vehicle on a piece of property with owner's permission. It might be someone who works for the company that did the clearing on the site and got permission from B9. I have no idea. So it's not illegal to put a vehicle on a piece of property with a for sale sign on it. That happens pretty much every day somewhere in this town and in every town.
Any council members have any comments? Okay. Council comments. Start with you, Mr. Karazi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I attended the Advisory Board of Health meeting last week, actually, and we have two new members who joined. One of them is a student and who will be basically a liaison with the youth, especially high school students. And for example, she will be sharing this flyer which says, "Our Talk, Our Turn to Talk," which is about the mental health issues of the youth, and this is going to be done on actual schedule for Wednesday, November 20th, 7:00 PM to 8:30 PM. And we highly encourage anybody who is a youth, please attend this. This one is really going to be a good one to sit and listen. Also, during 2024, the Advisory Board of Health have been pretty active, actually. We formed partnership with some organization. We invited various speakers. Every month, pretty much, we have speakers, and we were planning to have some slides on the highlights of 2024, which is going to be on the website of the Advisory Board. And again, thanks to the team, which is headed by Dr. Donna Leese. The meeting for Advisory Board, the first one is there every month and starts at 7:30 across the hall. And as I said, we have speakers every month, so we encourage everybody to come and join the meetings and learn about the health of our community. There is going to be a free clinic. This is a free community health screening that's going to be at Food Bank, which is located in 224 Churchill Ave. And that's going to be from, on November 21st, from 2:00 to 7:00 PM. So please make a note of that, and if you need health screening, please come, and that's going to be offered by the Somerset County Health Department. Tomorrow, we have Trail Committee meeting at 7:00 PM. That's going to be a Zoom meeting. And the last that I have is, tomorrow's actually World Kindness Day, Mr. Mayor. And so one can share random acts of compassion, say by helping strangers, giving back to the community, or teaching children the value of being nice. So don't forget tomorrow, do something nice. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilman Odiyaka. Microphone.
Okay, hello? Okay. The issue of dumping, I would say, is quite noticeable in third Ward, the Court of U. Last week, I saw two dumping spots on that road. Actually, I made a call to the township, and they came and they helped and cleared it. This morning, there's another one there. So the issue of dumping is rapidly going higher in that area. So I think we really, really need to follow it up and find out why the individuals dump. This includes many things, car parts, ledgers, chairs, along the line. So, Mayor, I think we really need to consider it in terms of urgency. Thank you.
There's an ordinance already against dumping. People do it because they're lazy or they don't want to spend the money to bring it to the dumping site. I think those are the reasons, and reported, and DPW is pretty good about picking it up.
Yes. Actually, I called them on a Wednesday before Thursday afternoon, and they went and picked it up.
It is a shame when you see a mattress sitting on the side of the road. Councilman Embarrasson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So number of meetings, committees that we attended this year, this last couple of weeks. I guess on the sixth, we had a planning board meeting, and after many years of planning board visits, the Church of Macedonia, Church of God got approved in Ward 4, 30 Booker Street. So people were very happy about that. Councilman Karazi and I went on a tour at the Center for Great Expectations. What an organization. They help a number of women, especially with children or pregnant, and they provide all kinds of assistance, not just one or two days, long-term assistance for them to get back up on their feet. Obviously, it's a nonprofit. They depend on the generosity of the people like us in town, as well as other grants and funding. So they recently have an application for $15,000 funding, but they require many votes. There are eight organizations that are vying for four spots to get $15,000 each. So if you can, please go to the Center for Great Expectations website and follow the link to vote for them. The more votes they get, the better chance of getting the $15,000. They are about a million and a half dollars shot in this year's funding, so every little bit helps. Please look them up. Great organization. Continuing our community service to Franklin Food Bank, one of my friends' high school alumni chose our food bank for a donation this year. They're actually from Sri Lanka, so they went to meet with the director, they went to the. They went to the food bank complex on Saturday. They made a donation to the food bank, thanks to, it's called Ananda College from Sri Lanka, Colombo, Sri Lanka. A bill was there. Thank you for covering the event. That was a very good event there. And, of course, we all attended, some of us attended, the Veterans Day celebration right here at the council chamber. Great event. People from, veterans from Canal Walk came. They did a nice presentation. We had a good time, and they rang the Liberty Bell after a meeting here. Other than that, I'd like to know more about what Guy mentioned about the Homeless People Day on the December 24th. I'll do what I can to mobilize some resources for the event to help the people out here. So I will talk to Guy separately on that. That's all I got, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Francois.
Good evening. I wish I could have attended the Veterans Day memorial service yesterday. Veterans Day is always a day for reflection and gratefulness for me, because my father was in World War II. He got shot in the head. He got his toe shot off. He died with a Purple Heart. So it's always a day of reflection for me, a day of gratefulness for all the people that have served to make our country the great country that it is. So thank you, all the veterans that are out there. And if I could have been at the service, I had to work, but if I could have been there, I would have been there. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Vasanella.
Thank you. I echoed the same sentiments as my father and many uncles' photo in World War II. Some were injured and subsequent wars also. And I saw some of the celebration here. As always, a wonderful job to all those who helped make it happen and were able to attend. I believe it's online, if anybody wants to see it. The main meeting in the last couple of weeks for myself was the Public Works Committee meeting we had today. And as I mentioned in my last report a month ago, we actually finished all of the paving that we set out to do, which is the first time, at least in decades, we were able to do that. And that also leads us to be able to jump into some projects that I'm just going to mention quickly in early spring, because the less paving we have to do from the year prior, year prior's budget, the more we can jump into these other projects. We'll be, and this goes back to a plan when I was on Public Works with Mr. Wright here, Councilman Wright, who initiated it and kind of led the way. And we have a multi-phase sidewalk plan that helps link the important parts of town, especially, all parts of town, especially what we deem most important, which is access to schools for children to walk and, of course, everybody else to use them. So we're going to be doing a bunch. I'll just mention, we're going to be in Sidney, South Lawrence, Prospect Street, Home, Ample Parts of Arden, parts of North Lawrence, parts of Matilda, parts of Highland. Most of these, I believe all of them are in the Fourth and Fifth Ward. So we'll be going full gear into that. We're designing them now, and hopefully, some of them, if not all of them, will roll out next year. And it's been going on, ongoing project. I think this is maybe technically considered Phase 3. There's still more to do, but we are coming near completing a major phase of this next year. And, of course, there's a lot of water work and other stuff going on. And I think somebody else mentioned about road repair or something. We post it on our website as things are getting done, or as projects are happening, to really try to put out when it's, we can't put out when it's going to happen prior to not just the contract being awarded, but then the schedule of the actual contractor. And there's goals they have to meet as far as how long. But we, my understanding, we do a pretty good job online if there's any roads that are going to be closed as soon as we find out they're going to be closed or traffic not in full use. We put it on the website. So anybody, unless it's an emergency repair, my understanding is we have everything on that website. Mr. Vornlocker commented on it when we do the manager's comments, but somebody had asked about it. But we can't predict, and I think one of the projects on Hamilton Street was mentioned, that's not going to be decided for a couple of years. So discreet scape cannot begin to know exactly what it's going to look like or exactly when it's going to be constructed for, I'm going to say, at least a couple more years for that specific one on Hamilton. Thank you, Mayor.
Counsel, I'm sorry, Mayor. I saw my calendar Eastern Avenue project.
I'm going to report on it.
Yeah, well, the manager will probably mention it, but there's a few public sessions. Some are for, some are public and some aren't, depending on the study. But relevant to Eastern Avenue, Hamilton, Demont intersection, the manager will, I'm sure, tell people specifically which one can be attended by the public if they care to. But yes, they're coming up this week, in the next couple of weeks. Councilman Karazi, thank you for mentioning that, and I'm sure the manager will follow up.
Thank you. Councilman Wright.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I only have basically one to two items. One, I was inquiring about homelessness in Somerset County. And I couldn't put my finger on any straight avenue to obtain the information that I wanted. So I went to Somerset County, and low and behold, January 23rd of 2024, Monarch Housing Associates did a report of Franklin Township, of every township, I should say, in Somerset County. And it talked about the chronic homelessness. It talked about where they live, where they can be found. It broke down as far as, in that type of housing, women with children, which makes up half. They talked about veterans that had no housing. They broke it down into drug addiction. They broke it down in such a way that it was unbelieved. I didn't understand this, so I had to call, because there had so many categories. And then they compared Somerset County to other counties in town. And being that we have 70,000 residents, I think we're ranked number 24. I'm not sure, but the township manager at some point in time can correct me, and I will be corrected, no doubt. And this dovetails with the housing, it's not called COA anymore, but it came out and said what townships should have as far as affordable housing, low-income housing. And it broke down from race, from white to African-American, black, to Latino, to indigenous personnel, other, mixed race. It took care of everything that you would want in a report, and I found it very interesting to read. If you want, you can pull it from the Somerset County website. I encourage you to read it. And one of the things, I will say that the reason why Somerset County is because we're one of the richest counties in New Jersey, and our rents are high compared to other counties in the state. So that was one of the reasons why we have a crunch in Somerset County as far as housing is concerned. So anyway, that was something to read, and that was good reading. It took me four or five days to digest it. But again, I called Monarch Housing Associates, and they gave me a little bit more insight as to how things are going. So I'd encourage you to read it. And, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to echo Mr. Vasanella's point with sidewalks. That's always in vogue. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Deputy Mayor.
No comment.
Thank you. For my comments, I would also like to express my appreciation for the Veterans Day ceremony. And I'd like to thank Mr. LeCort for all the work he did to make that happen, as well as members of our rec department. Mr. LeCort has been there for years doing Veterans Day and Memorial Day and getting the antique cars for Franklin Day. So he's a great contributor to the community, and I thank him for it. The other thing is, we did get a tiny bit of rain, but please conserve water and watch your matches and cigarettes. There's been fires up north in New Jersey. We'd prefer not to have them here in Franklin. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to echo what you just spoke about as far as the fire bans. I'll go a little more detail. So the entire state of New Jersey is currently under a ban on open burning and to include charcoal grills and the like, any type of outside fire pits. And so there's roughly 6,000 acres of forest currently on fire on the New York-New Jersey border near Greenwood Lake right now. A young firefighter lost his life two days ago. To put that in perspective, the entire area of Six Mile Run, the state park area that takes up just about all of the center part of our township, is about 2,500 acres. 6,000 acres is currently on fire. That's just one forest fire in the state of New Jersey, and there's others in southern part of the state. So I'd ask that everybody kind of use common sense to some degree, but also be kind of cognizant of what you're doing. There was a report this morning that I read about a vehicle that parked on a pile of leaves, and the car burst into flames as a result of the dry leaves under the car. Catalytic converters get very, very, very hot. And so you need to be very careful about where you park your car. And, you know, I know it sounds kind of silly, but I try to stay away from social media, but unfortunately, I'm sucked in, especially since I was laid up for the last three weeks. And someone had posted on a social media page about not wanting to snitch on their neighbor who was using a charcoal grill. I'm going to tell all of you who are watching this and all of you are here, snitch on your These are the kind of things that cause tragedy. Like I said, a young man lost his life. That fire did not start spontaneously, and it's not, you know, when we're in thunderstorm season and lightning strikes, sometimes it starts fires. We haven't had a thunderstorm in quite some time. I'm sure that whatever caused that fire up in North Jersey was as a result of a human being. I would hope that it was accidental and not intentional, but just please be very, very careful. Then on a lighter note, there's a holiday craft market this Saturday at the Senior Center from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., sponsored by our recreation department. So if you want to start off your holiday shopping, there's a perfect place to do it, 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. on Saturday. And I'd just like to thank Mr. Dominack and Director Mayweather for kind of pinch hitting for me for the last couple of weeks. I'm back here, and I know that they took care of all the business that needed to get taken care of, but I just wanted to thank them for stepping in for me while I was out for my surgery. And that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda and move up the item number 17, Old Business to 2024 Board Committees and Commissions vacancies. I have someone here that I'd like to nominate, and it happens to be his birthday, so he needs to leave.
Do we have a second on amending the agenda?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. We are skipping ahead on the agenda to item number 17, Old Business. Agendas are there next to the clerk. Boards, committees, boards, committees, and commissions, and vacancies, any nominations?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I would like to nominate Katir Elamaran as a youth member to the municipal alliance. He's in the back. He does a lot of work, and he's on a lot of different committees in the township. And he's also agreed to be our secretary. He's written books, and so I'm happy that he's here, and I'm happy that we're able to nominate him in person.
What was his name again?
We call him Katir. How do you say your first name? Ilankatir?
Ilankatir.
Ilankatir. Ilankatir. See? He didn't say it right either. Ilankatir. He is speaking to Mike.
So it's Ilankatir, but people usually call me Katir.
Katir. Yeah, yeah. And say your last name.
Ilamaran.
Ilamaran. Okay, I said that right.
Any other nominations for that position? Any other nominations for any position? So we can do this by acclamation? All in favor of Katir, being on the Youth Alliance, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Congratulations, Katir.
Thank you so much for everything you've been doing. Happy birthday. Now you can leave. I didn't want him staying here all night.
So I just want to give a shout out to him. He has been here before a few times. He's a young author. He writes, translates books from his mother, his father's mother tongue, which also happens to be mine, to English. So he's an upcoming author as well.
I thought he already wrote some books.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You've written, what, two books already?
Short stories, yes.
Yeah, that's my thought. Well, thank you. You have anything you want to say?
So I just want to say thank you to you, Councilwoman Francois, and also thank you to Mr. Paynton for connecting me with the municipal alliance and giving me this opportunity. And I'm excited to be working with the municipal alliance, just learning about what's happening in the community and being engaged, so, yeah.
Good, good. We need you. Thank you. Looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Good night. Happy birthday.
So we're now back to item number 10, Council Discussion Items, 2024 Best Practices Inventory. Mr. Vornlocker.
I think that I would open up the floor to any council members who might have had a question about our best practices inventory. This is an annual exercise that every municipality in this state is required to go through. It is tied to our state aid. This year, there were, I think, 46 graded questions, of which we met the mark on 42 of the 46. 35 were required to meet the minimum for your maximum state aid. So we were well above the minimum for this particular year's best practices inventory. There's about seven of these some questions, so I don't think that we need to go through all of them, unless someone has a question.
Do we have to vote on this?
No, you don't. We just need to have it as a discussion item, and we just discussed it as long as you and I had some words together. I think I would count that as a discussion to meet the requirements of the Department of Community Affairs.
Here we go. All right, on to approval of the minutes. We have none to approve. Time to pay the bills. Approval of the warrants in the amount of $8,106,498 and 25 cents on November 12, 2024, presented to the Township Council for payment. We have a motion on the warrants.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion, anyone would like to question or pull an item? Madam Clerk.
Councilman Embarrasson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Councilman Karazi.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Petosnick.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
Item number 13, Hearings and Adoptions of Ordinance on Second Reading. When an ordinance comes up, there is a first reading to announce to the world that we are considering an ordinance change, and then usually two weeks later, there is change, and then usually two weeks later, there is a second reading, which includes a public hearing. And we have two ordinances up for, no, one ordinance up for second reading, and that is ordinance 4452-24, an ordinance amending the Code of Township of Franklin County of Somerset, State of New Jersey, more particularly Chapter 169, nuisance ordinance and repealing Chapter 167, noise ordinance in its entirety. It's presented for public hearing and final adoption. The public hearing has been noticed as required to have a motion opened to the public.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
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 Oppose say nay. Motion is carried. Anyone wishing to speak on this may do so. Same rules apply.
Alex Strauss, 285 Haslett Way. I wanted to, yes, ask, well, I wanted to focus on the fact that I don't see anything about mufflers here. There was something about mufflers on the earlier ordinance. There's something about cars. There's something about, is there going to be? So that doesn't apply?
No, it's there.
But as far as cars and exhausts?
Title 39 of the Motor Vehicle Code is mufflers for cars.
So that covers it?
That's state law.
Okay, so that...
Municipal law can't supersede state law. So it's never been in a municipal ordinance for mufflers on cars.
Okay.
Mufflers on equipment. It's in the current proposed ordinance that's to be up for adoption tonight. Mufflers on equipment is required. Lawn mowers, snow blowers, and the like, generators. It's all in the ordinance.
It's all in the ordinance?
Yep.
Okay.
Just copied and pasted from the old one.
Okay. Well, I want to also, a couple other things. The decibels, they don't want to take any more decibel readings, it appears. And so is that not useful at times? I understand the police department might have issues with trying to take the readings, but that would be one way to say that there's a problem, okay? And perhaps it makes it easier for them in their business, but I had an issue in my development with a very noisy car, and noise meters were used at the time. The police department was involved. So I'm concerned about that. And at this time, I also want to bring up something that is missing from Franklin, but has been instituted in some other municipalities, and that's leaf blowers. I'd like to see that taken up. It talks about nuisances. It talks about noise. Of course, it's not just noise. You're talking about fumes as well and two-stroke engines. So that's something that would be nice to see Franklin do. Okay? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So anyone else wish to speak?
Seeing no one coming forward, may our motion to public portion on this hearing be closed.
Second.
So the issue of leaf blowers is being taken up by Senator Smith statewide, so I don't want to interfere with that. And the problem with decibels and a noise sound meter is it just was not practical. They got them out to your property that time, but it's just the chief, I'm sorry, the Public Safety Director was here and explained the amount of work that goes into it, and it just wasn't getting done. So we're going to this method as it's just more practical, and it's more likely that we'll be able to enforce this ordinance and these nuisances. I understand, you know, and it's been said, having an actual calibrated measurement is probably more useful in court, but at least we can get them to court with this ordinance. So that's why we're going to that way. Do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I had a couple of questions to clarify. My understanding is in line with, I guess, the intention of it. So would you want me to ask those questions now, Mayor?
Well, this would be the time.
Okay. I have a copy of it in front of me, and these questions may have come up in the past, forgive me, but this thing's been through a few, it's been a few ideas and changes, so I want to make sure. On 169-17, which covers a lot of the things I'm concerned about and others have spoken to, it says loud and necessary or unusual noise prohibited. And the sentence is great, and it covers, I guess, just about anything that can be considered annoying. We actually use the word annoy. It doesn't have anything about hours or distances, and I mention that because, I mean, if it will work in court, that's great, but the 169-18, 169-19, 169-20, that get into a lot more details with equipment and noise, you know, music, different ways noise is made. This thing here does not need to have any reference to hours or distances from another property or another home. This on itself, this line that says it shall be unlawful for a person who may continue cause, and so on, that in and of itself will give an officer the discretion to go to a home, and if there's not any music or construction equipment, just if there is loud, obnoxious noise that could be considered annoying, this would give that officer the direction and the authority to write a ticket that hopefully would stand up in court. Is that the intention of 169-17?
Yes.
Okay, and we do not need to mention any, it could be the middle of the day if you're being annoying, and it doesn't matter how far you are from someone else.
It could be in the middle of a council meeting.
Also, yes.
No, yes, no, totally. So if your...
I just want to make sure.
If your neighbor is blaring music or has a live band in their backyard.
Well, forget equipment. I'm talking about, because the other ones deal with...
So if I'm blasting an air horn at your property at 2 o'clock in the afternoon, it's a violation of the ordinance.
And it doesn't matter how far...
Doesn't matter what time it is.
Or what hours. Okay. And then the only other thing, and I think I mentioned, asked you briefly, but I know we were about to sit down. The only other question I had was 169-18, and that's where we mention the operation of machine or device is clearly audible from a neighboring dwelling or at a distance of 200 feet from the building in which it is located. I assume they mean the noise. I just want to make sure, and I think you mentioned that it would be interpreted, that it wouldn't have to be inside someone's dwelling, but from their front porch or their back patio. We don't need to reference outside or outside of the dwelling at the dwelling. I just want to make sure that it isn't based on you have to be sitting inside your living room to be...
Councilman, after you asked me the question, I went back and read it. The distance is measured from the source of the noise, not the other way. So if you think about it, it's from whatever the source of the noise is to 200 feet.
No, no, forget the 200. The 200, I mean, there have been different opinions on it, but putting that aside, it's the one that says that it is clearly audible from a neighboring dwelling or at a distance 200 feet, but I'm just talking about the neighboring dwelling.
If you're standing at the dwelling and you're outside, it's from the dwelling. So the dwelling is the structure, right? So it's not inside the dwelling.
Just, okay.
Correct.
So for the houses that are less than 200, say 50 feet away, someone's sitting on their back porch, and after 10 o'clock, they're annoyed by these noises, an officer can base it on standing outside. It doesn't have to be disenfranchised being inside the home. Okay. Well, those, you know, in general, I think there's still some ways to improve it over time, but I think it's a wonderful leap into where we need to go and be at for several reasons concerning these issues. So those were the two concerns I had, but I hope that, I know some people were looking at taking a little deeper dive, and if there are amendments that people feel would be helpful, I encourage them to come forward down the road. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Madam Clerk.
Councilman Embarrasson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Councilman Carrasi.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Petosnick.
Yes.
Councilman Bassinella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
Item number 14, Ordinance on Introduction and First Reading. Ordinance 4457-24, an ordinance to amend the municipal code of the Township of Franklin County of Somerset, State of New Jersey, more particularly Chapter 226, Vehicles and Traffic, Section 226-30, Handicap Parking, Subsection A, Handicap Parking on Street, Remove 28 Roberts Road. The foregoing ordinance is presented to the Township Council for adoption on first reading, posting, and publication in accordance with law on public hearing and final adoption at a meeting of the Township Council to be held on Tuesday, November 26, 7:00 p.m. at the council chambers. Do we have a motion to introduce?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Madam Clerk.
Councilman Embarrasson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Councilman Carrasi.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Petosnick.
Yes.
Councilman Bassinella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
Ordinance 4458-24, an ordinance to amend the municipal code of the Township of Franklin County of Somerset, State of New Jersey, more particularly Chapter 81, Affordable Housing, by adding new Article II Municipal Housing Liaison. The foregoing ordinance is presented to the Township Council for adoption on first reading, posting, and publication in accordance with law on public hearing and final adoption at a meeting of the Township Council to be held on Tuesday, November 26, 2024, at 7:00 p.m. in the council chambers. Do we have a motion to introduce?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. So this is pretty much what it says, appointing a municipal housing liaison. It's required by law in the Affordable Housing Bill that's gone before us, or statute that's before us. And so we are just complying with state law. Any other discussion? Madam Clerk.
No, no, nope. Hold up, hold up. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
This is the first time I saw it, was when I saw it in the, when you came up with the ordinances, the package on Friday, and I was just struck as to where did it come from, and didn't get an answer. Now, did this come from administrative or...
Comes from state law.
Okay, it came from state law. But when were we going to find that?
We were notified about a month ago that we needed to put this on as a model ordinance from the state of New Jersey.
Right, okay. Hold on, hold on, hold on. Where, and you said to come up with a model?
No, the state of New Jersey provided a model ordinance for us to enact.
But when were we going to know about this? Because basically, what you just made was a housing director...
It's Mark Healy. It's what he does. It's already his job.
It's not a housing director.
No, it's not a housing director. It is a person who administers the municipal functions of affordable housing.
Let Mr. Wright finish his question.
Now, I went through this on the Housing Authority, quote unquote, of Franklin Township as administered by RPM, and I talked to Mr. Clark, who was the Housing Director in New Brunswick, who we brought over to be the part-time Housing Director here in Franklin Township. And of course, RPM said it's a great idea. And by the way, he's no longer there. He left, and we have someone new on board. And I looked at this, and I don't mind it being introduced. I don't mind anything, but sometimes we don't receive the information. Sometimes we don't get a chance to actually eat the information, as they say, and it's dropped on my plate, and I'm supposed to vote for it. Now, sometimes you understand things, sometimes you don't. This is the case where I didn't understand. No one explained it. If the mayor knew, or someone from the administrative staff knew, the administrative committee, whoever, I just didn't like the fact that it was dumped, excuse me, placed on the agenda for us to arbitrarily approve. I don't like that.
Can I answer a question first? And I really can't speak to, it probably goes into the second round. You've always had a municipal liaison, so this is just reaffirming who it is. It's, so absolutely nothing has changed. Mr. Healy has been performing this function for as long, literally for as long as he's been here.
Exactly.
So we've always had a municipal housing liaison, and all they are is that they're, I don't want you to think that this is some kind of managerial position that somehow has, you know, they're the housings are in the town. It's not what they are. They're the person who's responsible for filling out the forms that have to be filed with the state with regards to our affordable housing obligation. And I'm not talking about our housing authority obligation, leaving that aside. It's just about our compliance with our third and fourth round affordable housing obligations. That's kind of all it is. And you've always had one. The new law just required you to reaffirm it, and that's all we're doing.
I understand that because... Mr. Wright, Mr. Vornlocker, did you have anything?
Well, no, I was gonna say, I mean, and I'd echo for the most part what Mr. Raynon just said, but again, this was a directive from the state of New Jersey for the municipalities that do not have this particular aspect in their ordinances as it relates to affordable housing to institute it. It's not, it was not something that would have any discussion because it's something that's mandated. The law says that we must do this, and therefore we're doing it. And that's why the addition to the code. The purpose of this municipal housing liaison, as it's spelled out under 81-12, makes it very clear. The purpose of this article is to create the administrative mechanisms needed for the execution of Franklin Township's responsibility to assist in the provision of affordable housing pursuant to the Fair Housing Act of 1985. That's otherwise known as the Mount Laurel Act. So I think that, while I understand your concerns, Councilman, I think that I can, you know, at best try to put them at ease, and that this is just, as Mr. Raynon said, codifying something that's existed in Franklin Township since 1985.
Mr. Wright, your turn.
I'm sorry. Were you finished?
Your turn.
I understand that because, having worked on the, still working on the redevelopment agency, I know Mr. Healy, our township planner, talked about what we needed because he went to, and I guess represented us at the Rounds of COO, or whatever it's called now, and he came back and he talked about it, how many units we needed and whether or not we were ever going to get there. He spoke about if the township owned the property or the housing units, whether we'd get credit for it, for using that. I mean, he went through the whole gambit, so I understand what Mr. Healy was doing. I just didn't see it coming. And as Mr. Raynon says, you're codifying, codifying, you're just putting it all together to say that this is what the person does. This is how he's going to operate, him or her. And that's fine. I just didn't like the way that it was, I mean, I wish I would have known. I could have looked at it. I could have saw it.
We just got it, Councilman. That's the point I'm trying to make, is we were just told by the state of New Jersey to do this. You're getting it as a result of us being told, staff being told, present this ordinance to your council. That's why you're getting it now, because, and that's why I'm telling you that it's not something that we created. This is something that the state of, well, you're saying you know, but I don't understand then what the question is.
I think maybe the confusion is, this is Mark Healy's...
Yeah, I understand. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I understand.
It's also first reading. It'll be up again in two weeks, right?
Yeah.
And just for the record, Mark was appointed, I just went back into our records, the earliest resolution I could see is from 2008.
Right.
Mark was appointed.
Yes, when he became a full-time township employee.
It's what Mark has been doing all along. That's what I'm saying. This is not, Councilman, it's just kind of something that was ministerial. I don't want you to feel like it's something that was kind of dropped on you, but the provisions in here are essentially the provisions that were in our Mount Laurel III settlement. III settlement for the duties of the Affordable Housing Liaison. We're just codifying it. We had, by the way, we had an ordinance. It was, I think it was 81 or 88-18 that, that we had, that we repealed some years ago, but we just need to have an ordinance on the book that, that lays out what the duties of the housing liaison, municipal housing liaison does, Affordable Housing Liaison Officer does. So that's all we, that's kind of all we, all we're doing. So this has been in effect. We haven't changed anything. We're not changing who's doing it. We're not changing his duties. We're just, as I said, codifying, you know, what it is that we've been doing.
Like an update.
Way to get down to black and white.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Update.
Okay.
Madam Clerk.
Councilman Embarrasson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Councilman Karazi.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Petosnick.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
Yes.
On to the consent agenda, item number 15. Items A through M is listed on the consent agenda. Portion of this meeting are presented to Township Council for adoption. Do we have a motion to adopt?
I move A through M.
We have a second.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion? Anyone like to pull an item or question an item? Madam Clerk.
Councilman Embarrasson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Councilman Karazi.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Petosnick.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
Yes.
There are no motions to, I mean, resolutions to be voted on separately. We've already done all business. There is no executive session, so do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. We are adjourned. Be well, Franklin.